Good evening, everyone. This is a meeting of the Board of Education in the Department of Conducting the school district's business and has not been considered published in the meeting. There was time for public participation during the meeting designated in the agenda. Upon request of the superintendent, the district shall make reasonable accommodations for a person with disabilities to be able to participate in the meeting. All right. We can go a little politics. Mr. Albright?
Yeah.
Mr. Arnold?
Brother.
Bruce Lee here. Redder here. Kanga here. Your monkey. Ware up here. Rafferty. The Watson here. All right. Um, we need, uh, next, we'll move on to the meeting minutes. I have the Board of Education approved meeting minutes from September eleventh to May three of September. It's been moved at second for any discussion. Here we go, discussion, all those in favor of approving the meeting minutes from September eleventh as presented by I.
Aye.
And opposed, say nay. All right, they have been approved. Move on to the approval of the agenda. Come with the Board of Education position that has been moved in second for any discussion. Here we go, discussion, all those in favor of approving the agenda as presented by I.
Aye.
Any say, any opposed, say nay? This is approved. Move on to our school presentation, starting off with our shining star. Um, our class of twenty twenty-three graduate Michaela Spacino. We recognize her for her achievements. Um, recent Dexter High School graduate Michaela Spacino began welding when she was twelve years old and later joined the welding program. And the South and West Washington consortium has achieved success. For senior year, she soon distinguished herself as a gifted high school welder and won the competition in place of fourth in the overall category of the American Welding Society, AWS. Third in overall at the state university welding competition, second overall one is not even called it welding educational and won first place in the TIGD, the tungsten air gas category at the Monroe Community College Competition. After placing first in the overall category at both twenty twenty-three regional and state skills USA welding competitions, Michaela traveled to Atlanta, Georgia this past summer where she earned a top twenty finish at the Skills USA National Competition. Michaela is now working towards her associate's degree in welding certification at Block Dr. College. Having received a scholarship from the American Welding Society for her outstanding competition performances. She is also working at the Celine aerospace company, Flairberg, where she is welding heat exchangers for airplanes. Looking toward the future, she is aiming to compete at the world's still welding competition to be held in Shanghai in twenty twenty-six. In Michaela's word, words, I am very thankful that Dexter schools participates in the consortium program and gives me the opportunity to learn what I wanted to pursue in high school rather than waiting until college. This program set me up for the most successful achievement I can achieve and I'm so grateful. Um, and, uh, accepting her rising star award is her parents. Um, if they want to tell all, do you guys want to say a few words?
Oh, I asked if I had to prepare it.
Ten, twenty.
Thank you. She's at class right now, so she could.
So, I mean, I would like to know that this is our second rising star from class twenty twenty-three. Where do you want us to be?
Right there. Welcome to you.
Come to me. Yeah, right. That's true.
Well, she, the Washington will pay for it, the whole trip. Um, she was gonna do the one next one, uh, next summer, but decided to do the job thing and then went backwards a little bit, so she's gonna do Shanghai instead of Paris next summer. But, um, she has to go back through regionals and states, she'll have to win first three sixty again, and then go to nationals. And then try to qualify for the international. So, yeah. Yeah, I, I'm hoping the chaperone. I'm not sure fellow students meet chat, but I'm sure that. Yeah, yeah, maybe I can, you know. Hand them to her, yeah. Self-free. Yeah. Yes, thank you.
And please, please, please. All of you in the top three. Um, all right, well, we'll move on to our next presentation, which is our audit presentation. Will share the results of the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, all of this financial audit.
Feel free, you don't need to stay.
It's time, it's exciting.
I want to start my presentation with providing one last round of thanks to Sharon Rashby, who is almost retiring.
Well, not really.
Retiring officially from one position to this one, but he is bound in calling, it's gonna be a little bit. Sharon and her team, um, as usual, did a great job getting ready for the audit. She actually made her team step into the breach and do a ton of work this year, um, to try and get sure they were ready for her intending. I don't know if you made your announcement yet. Anyway, they did a nice job, so I'm here to present the results of the audit. Um, I've taken the hundred and some pages worth of reports you have in front of you and convinced them down about eight or ten slides for you here, so feel free to ask questions as we roll along. This is a pretty not painful presentation, so it should be pretty easy to get through. Um, slide number two, I just want to note that an unmodified or a clean audit opinion was provided on your financial records, which is the highest form of assurance given to you, um, as a, as your auditors. We didn't have any findings or reportable conditions, so those are related to laws and regulation, clients and internal control areas. So, both at the financial statement level, financial reporting level, and also in major federal program funding, well, findings as well. We did audits from the federal standpoint, required to do a certain percentage of all expenditures for federal grants each year. This year, as it was last year, um, the Esser funds were audited, it's like, we also had special training, um, this quality of coverage. We audited those this year, once again, no findings, we had reportable conditions, that was about a million and eight of your total, which is about half of all your federal funds received this last year. The note there is those funds are not done. So, this year twenty-three ended all of the federal COVID funding. Now, other things are springing up, not so much in the federal area, but in the state area. So, all kinds of new competitive and non-competitive grants are now coming through the state of Michigan. I understand it says, not only from security to school psychologists, everything's going forward. On the next page of the slides, thanks, uh, slide number three. Um, just point out in the big audit report, set up rifling through all the pages, trying to find out what happened with the district. The management's discussion and analysis, which appear, appear at pages five to sixteen, provide a pretty succinct synopsis of what occurred in the district this last year. It's a good place to point taxpayers to if they have questions. Of course, your audit board will be posted, sure after approval from this meeting tonight, we did post it on the website, and that financial area that pops up in the first one on the desk, the website, there's one. Just a couple of items, um, in the financial statements themselves, uh, the first two financial statements in there are government-wide statements, so they include some numbers that you don't see in your normal presentations, like the telephone or any of the other fonts. You'll see things on there like pension liability and fixed assets. That first financial statement, if you look at it on the report, it actually shows a negative number. So, under net position on, both you were in business, think about it in earnings, as a district, on the school accrual, um, level is negative, which is typical of every system in the state of Michigan, outside of a couple that I know, some smaller ones that, um, that don't have proper taxes there, or they don't have any state source revenue, and they don't have any teachers because they're charging. Um, so, a couple of numbers on there that caused that first financial statement to be upside down is Dexter's share of the ORS or the return, state retirement system. Your share this last year was ninety-seven point three million dollars as far as the liability. That's up, about thirty-four million dollars from here before, how does that happen in one year's time? Has nothing to do with what happened, what happened in the markets. The prior year audit report was based on valuation of September thirty, twenty-one, the market was sky-high. The twenty twenty-three numbers are based on the same valuation that has been set for thirty twenty-two in the markets. Also on that same presentation is the district share of the retiree healthcare piece that's in that pension system. That liability did in the year was about five point five million dollars, previous year about four point five. That one's actually been pretty stable in the market now, a little bloop this last year, once again, same thing in the market. So, the, the result, if you look at that first financial statement, it's a deficit, that position of forty-three. Um, that, that a deficit that has to be reported to stay, it kind of plans have to be done, it's just fortunate for them. What's there because of those accounting expenses. Also, still talking about government-wide data on slide four. Um, the change in debt position was actually an eight point nine million dollar difference, so positive there. Overall revenues at the government-wide level, about seventy-three million dollars this year is compared to sixty-nine and perhaps two new costs last year. What changed? Got a big pot of money from the state, one-time funding related to retirement. Came through, um, Sharon and I said on two committees at the state level, we were trying to get for them, we asked them to just account for the state level, the probably around, they want their passive income of euros. So, it showed up on everybody's state, so we got money in the door, um, and then we turn around and it affected the retirement system as we did, so these numbers were inflated a bit by that. Total expenses on the government-wide levels, four million versus fifty-seven point nine million for, same thing, that same, those same dollars flow through on the expense side of things, plus the changes in the pension liability, also important, that's saving, so it's. All right, next couple of slides, we'll talk just about the governmental funds, which is our normal reporting, um, area. You'll see in your slide, I've given you, um, four funds listed on our home, and you see it now, this is not major funds. The non-major funds include your service fund, student school activities fund, and the services fund, so those are in that column. The other funds are in here on their own because of their magnitude as far as their percents of totals on the financial state, so according to the foundation state, we have the insurance fund. Just want to touch on the general fund and maybe the capital projects fund that's in the middle. So, general fund, this is the balance sheet, so assets at the end of the year about nineteen point nine million dollars. Most of that is money in the bank or invested and money owed to us by the state of Michigan, state aid for July. Many, many years ago, the state decided they were going to balance their September budget by stretching schools to two minutes, so now you receive two three months gap. Liability is about just under nine million dollars. Good chunk of that is owed to teachers, uh, on their contracts that are paid in the summer, or services provided, so there's four, uh, two, two big, two barrels a month, so there were four barrels that were relating back, there were payments. Fund balance, end of the year, ten point nine million dollars. You'll see the breakdown there, as a district, you have committed and assigned various portions of fund balance for future projects, algae, it's a, it's a, it's a breakdown. Uh, but overall fund balance, if you were to take it as a percent of spending, about twenty percent, so that's very. Capital projects, just, I just want to point this one out because the numbers are large here, so the two thousand and seven capital projects fund has eighteen and a half million dollars in the bank and invested at the end of June. That was all to do with the second series of bonds that were issued during fiscal year. So, sixteen point something million of bonds were issued, she had a huge premium on that issuance, so all that money came flowing in, all spent the, um, before fiscal year. Next page over is revenue expense for those same funds. General fund revenue and incoming transfers, about fifty-two point four million dollars. Expenditures of about fifty-three point seven million, so you actually used some equity in the general fund, about a million three. Um, you actually had the budget to use some equity in general. About the next slide. Capital projects fund, what's going to see revenues there are eighteen point one million dollars, so it's definitely to do with that bond issuance. Um, it's about three point seven. That capital projects non-bond account, that's where the proceeds from the sale of co-fund, here back, are sent. So, the only earning, or the only income there is, is from the bank. On slide seven, budgeted actual results for the general fund. Last couple of slides here. You had budgeted, remember how you do your budget, a state requires you before your fiscal year ends. So, back in June of twenty-two, you adopted a budget for twenty-three for the general fund, and then you do amendment generally in November, and then. Uh, this compares the final budget and the actual results. So, budgeted for revenues, about one point seven, actually collected about fifty-two point four, um, so the various there about six hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars to put within. And most of that, quite frankly, is some additional, was one-time tariff funds, some additional money that came through on the, the, uh, July and August.
August.
August, so even after you're in, but related back to June, so that's, but basically revenue was pretty high. Um, expenditures, budgeted fifty-five point seven million, expended about fifty-three point seven, so two million dollar underspending of the expenditure budget, so the white variants. Um, various things there, um, positions that were budgeted for the full trilogy here, or it's maybe seen some, some supply budgets forward into the next year, it's, that's right. So, overall, looked to use about formula knowledge and equity to create, so that's a positive, or against, it's a negative, so, so, that's kind of what they're expecting. Couple of quick slides here, one on debt in capital assets, uh, slide number eight. So, at the end of the year, you had just over a hundred and one million dollars in outstanding bonds. Paid back ten point seven million dollars to your scheduled bond, so those are two bond bonds. Um, and then you issued sixteen point four seven on that series to do a divi, insurance for the, for the capital funds. But those are, that's part of that series that was voted on by the voters back in two thousand and seventeen through, taking it in a couple of different, different chances. Capital assets in the end year, none of depreciation, about a hundred and twenty-two million, you added about three point eight million dollars of additions, various things going around in the district, improvements such, plus, as all the good stuff this year. Then lastly, um, in this last fiscal year, the district did receive and expend about a million nine in COVID-related funds. Just remind you, those are not done, so as part of whatever district is facing now, it's like, we're getting back somewhat to normalcy when it comes to that stuff. We had really nice bumps in the state aid foundational law, so last couple of years, that was happening, this depends on how long it's straight, was that, it's one of the things. Um, then the foundational loss was increased up to the next six point eight. But this year, you built five hundred bucks in your budget, that's increasing.
Yeah, ninety-five hundred. Or ninety-eight hundred.
Yeah.
Ninety-seven oh eight.
Overall, I'll lean on it, um, which is what you want us for, which is what we're used to seeing as auditors as well. Um, I think the finance office has stabilized itself as far as bodies. Except for the one at the top, she's moving a lot, but you had some, Sharon had some turnover in that office, had a person come back, which has been a great comeback, so it's really super important. It's not an order, but it's super important to, because the board knows that the finance offices doing what they need to do, so. They're the ones standing at the gate, making sure the dollars are spent, so. I would take the question.
Yes, one clarifying question, um, so just to make sure I'm clear, so all the COVID money has come in and gone out, is that correct?
All the federal COVID money, yes.
So, the chart will be. Dexter has been spending out these months.
Federal money, yes. I have blended in there because there's so many grants to keep track of, other monies that are not federal that are kind of COVID, so we had the school safety grant and those kinds of things I have continued to include in the chart, just so that you see all these other things, but in terms of federal and the federal reporting, that is done.
Legislatively, you know, the state of Michigan, because they're doing things to try and address learning loss, you know, that kind of good stuff, and part of that are a bunch of these categories that are, you know, grants are happening for you to be able to hire psychologists, social workers, counselors, all that stuff, that's all COVID-related, but not coming from the federal sources.
And we drew it all intentionally so that we had the money and could earn interest in everything on it, instead of, some districts have spread that out. We just basically drew it all upfront so that we had access to all of that money.
Sure, it's good. No, it's a, a question, a couple of comments. Uh, the, the, you pointed out that the variance was favored, well, paying on expenses, I was watching the board, that's a double-edged sword. Typically, if we wanted, if you think you wanted to do or understand, and our goal is not to make experience, we can't there. We want to, so we recognize that we'll have some reasonable positive variance, but we'd like uh, s- smaller number, private one services. My question, uh, who actually instituted the accounting standards on the pension, except for the state, except for some common board?
The governmental accounting standard, yeah. So, they had to match, because the, the, so there, there's a very similar standard that's, um, for regular businesses that use full accrual accounting, that report under the FAFD. So, the GASB has to keep up, so they did their, the other part of it was, is because governments, uh, defined benefit pension plans are huge in the government space, not so much in the private space anymore, you know, like Jim, that way, there's, there's, that's part of the bargaining, you know, it's happening. Um, there was this huge liability out there that nobody ever talked about, it's only at the state level, so that's, so like GASB said, we've been showing that, uh, each effect that you'll do. You're in a part of a cost-sharing plan, which is why you pay that, which is getting close to fifty percent.
So, it's a general thought, it's a security thing. And the reality is, it's numbers on paper, uh, have nothing to do with our cash responsibilities, uh, it's not something we have to worry about, something when we're really verifying how we're performing, budgeting, and then goes off the street.
Now, the only, the only piece that was directly related to the district reality is the rate that you have to pay, so that is your cash flow. There, the rate is really headed in two pieces, there's the piece that nets, so that, that rate is like thirty-five percent plus, that truly is an expenditure of the district. The whole rate is more like forty-three or forty-four percent, the state gives us that money in state aid, now they bill us back for it to get to that full rate, so that's the number to keep an eye on. If that thirty-five raises to forty, on your amount of payroll, that's a really big number, another five percent. So, the state's been doing all they can to try and keep that number up, that thirty-five percent number or so, so. Your range is a really big number, yeah, it's just going up dramatically, you know, with insurance, it was retirement, five percent when I started with the, so.
This was, I, I remember when I was four, I remember. The other thing I noted, I think that the final foundation loss is somewhat lower than what we planned on in our budget, so we don't extract that. But I think just want to thank Sharon and her team of gentlemen for the outstanding job that they got, and for all the effort that goes into, uh, making us feel comfortable with the numbers and credibility of the central office. The other thing, I guess I'd point out this to board, is that we're legally required to do this, it's great to have this family, part of the community. The reality is, when we're, uh, doing our planning for the year, uh, numbers that we really care about, the November revision, and that's really the way we measure how we're doing the best plan. Uh, this has many other things in there, it'd be difficult to focus on that, but we did that earlier, uh, in the year, to resolve your information, writing variances about that. And, uh, and so it's just, it's great, we can't decide, we'll really manage this. Thank you very much, appreciate it, thanks.
All right, we'll move on to our virtual learning, which is our virtual learning coordinator and our executive director of the department. Uh, we'll share the overview of the district's virtual learning program.
Uh, Mike did very good. He runs all our virtual learning and actually helps international students and cultural group training and things. Uh, we have quality in, for some of Kentucky, for boxes, but it's, it's.
The introduction.
I have the introduction.
Uh, so, good evening, my name is Andrew John, and I'm the virtual coordinator for the district, which means that I oversee and support our virtual learners, grades them five through twelve. It's my tough year in the district, I was initially hired as a seventh grade PE and help teacher, I actually got a lot of your kids or probably young adults already in class. Uh, five years ago, I transitioned to the virtual coordinator position. Prior to teaching in Dexter, I worked for the Scottsdale High School District in Scottsdale, Arizona, where I first started off as a, um, high school education help teacher, and then I was fortunate enough to interview and be selected for a leadership team that created and implemented their virtual learning program. So, I brought, uh, my knowledge and my, um, experience from Scottsdale to Dexter. So, tonight, I wanted to give you kind of an overview of what virtual learning looks like in our district, and if you have any questions, I think I need to. Here we go, uh, first, I want to start out with reasons why students are enrolled in virtual courses. At the high school level, some students express interest and passion in language and elective courses that we don't offer in person. So, we give us opportunity to them to pursue their passion and enroll in those courses directly. But my recommendation, when our students are participating in our Japanese, Latin, American side language, German, and then popular elective courses, our criminology, and veterinary science, just to name a few. Some of our students participate in out-of-state activities, so right now, we have a student who is playing, uh, higher level hockey out of state for the year. Uh, we have another student who is learning in Japan and traveling there with her family, her father is a guest professor for university there, so she's there for a semester. And so, by offering these virtual courses for our students, they're able to continue to be Dexter students while learning remotely, and then they'll transition back to the classroom. Uh, mental health, unfortunately, some of our students are unable to come to school and learn in the classroom, and it's just amazing that we give these families the opportunity to learn remotely while they're in therapy, while they're getting healthy, um, and receiving support. I'm their mentor, and it's just been really rewarding watching their progress, and the families are so fortunate that they get them this experience, um, they. Um, they, and a quick success story, I met her students, met her students who had been virtual for the past three years, um, to the point where she had trouble leaving her house. And with the support, um, of the Dexter teachers and myself, we have now got her to come into school a few days a week. And ultimately, she will transition hopefully that full time. So it's been a really rewarding experience. Um, this data shows the enrollment trend for virtual learning from fall of two thousand eighteen to spring of two thousand twenty-three. So the blue bar indicates the total number of students enrolled in one or four virtual classes. And then the orange indicates the total number of virtual courses that those students are enrolled in. Um, so for example, the students are able, based off the grade level, to take anywhere from one to eight virtual classes. So what this data shows is that there is a need and there is an interest for virtual learning in our district. Besides the COVID outlier. There's two main platforms that our students enroll in. For young five through eighth grade, they enroll in Lincoln Learning. And then typically, um, eighth or ninth through twelfth grade, Michigan Virtual is our main platform. So I'll get into a little more detail on each of those, uh, in just a little bit. But as a whole, these are the highlights and the support that each of those platforms offer. For each course, students are assigned a Michigan certified teacher, and they're responsible for providing the content, regaining the assignments. They offer virtual office hours. Sometimes they, you know, schedule live lessons or archive those lessons so students have those resources to utilize. Uh, and they're available via email, Zoom, uh, they do a really nice job. So I am their mentor for the most part, so I am their kind of, their just go-to. If they have questions about logging in, or they're just not sure what an assignment is asking them, or they just want to talk about their pacing. And, you know, what do they do to get back on track? I support that. Some students also learn virtually or complete their virtual course in a lab at the high school during the day. So it's a block of time where there's a Dexter Community Schools teacher who supports that lab. And then I go in and check on them weekly to make sure that they're on pace and, uh, to make sure they, they're, they're good to go. There is an orientation module, which I really love this feature, that's required, um, in each course. So with my experience, I've noticed that students have to be confident with how to navigate through the platform before the content is even up locked. So they need to know how to log in, how to contact their teacher, how to submit assignments, um, in order for them to be successful. So this is a nice feature that gets blocked until they successfully complete that module. There is a pacing calendar embedded in each course, which tells students exactly what they need to complete deeply, stay on pace, complete the course on time. Uh, I, for the younger grades, for our young students, I create a daily plan via Google Doc. So they open it, they know exactly what they have to do, and they highlight their tasks when it's completed. So I know they're ready for more. At the high school level, if students get behind pace and they need, um, their pacing guide adjusted, we work together and done with their high school counselor and their team there. It's a, you know, make that happen so they're successful. And then at the younger grades, Lincoln Learning provides course kits that contains materials required to complete offline projects. And I had a parent the other day say that his, uh, his son received his course, course kit, and it was like academic. First thing that he was excited, he got all these materials and he was excited to learn and use them. Uh, this is just to take a deeper look into Lincoln Learning. So when students log into their account, they have course cards for each of their classes, which, um, I took a screenshot of an ancient history course card. So this shows their current grade and their progress bar, and then the number of points they've received out of the twelve points. And then they have a course card for every different subject. When they log into their course card, course card is organized by units. And then you need, within each unit, there's a lesson. And I took a screenshot of an English lesson. Uh, I just wanted to show that this content, um, is presented in a variety of different learning objects or modalities. So it gives the learner an opportunity to read about the subject, they can view the text, speech, if they feel like listening to it. They're able to watch it, to show it. It is a formative chat for understanding, to make sure that, yes, I got this, I understand this. Uh, and then there's also play-its, which are interactive games embedded in the system. And then the assessments are more of a summative test for understanding. Uh, Michigan Virtual also has course cards. Um, I took a screenshot of the academic snapshot that's available for parents, mentors, and students. So it gives a list of all the courses they're enrolled in, uh, their start and ending, and then their grade points and assignments. And so parents and counselors, uh, and myself were emailed this information, so we keep track of, of their progress.
Labs.
So.
Physics has some lab courses.
So that's a good question. For the most part, it's a virtual lab, so the student, we'll talk more about this, um, the student can watch the lab being graded, I guess. Um, some students have gone into our classes at the high school and used their materials and their equipment to, to practice or reinforce that learning with the lab.
No, it's great. And then our younger grades, like any of them too, many of them have kits. So once a student enrolled in a class, they get a physical shipment of materials and supplies, labs, and through an art class, through a science class. So they're able to follow along. And all the older students, they've been able to create digital, recreate the experience. Or as Anne said, they're able to come in and do some of that.
And then lastly, I just wanted to, um, highlight some of my responsibilities as the virtual coordinator. I work with administration to identify potential students that would benefit from virtual learning. And then I enroll and register them. I meet with the families and the students to, um, onboard them, you know, answer any questions that they have. I support the high school labs, I monitor their, um, their progress. And that, like I said, if they are behind, parents and counselors are contacted. We do require virtual students to complete standardized tests. So I administer the NDLVA and the APs app to our virtual learners. And I also want to collaborate, um, with the special ed team to make sure that the IP and five to four combinations are uploaded into their courses at the beginning of the semester. And then this is going on right now, I work closely with Mike Wagner to make sure that all of our virtual students are accounted for, are being accounted for.
I think similar to our audit presentation, there's a lot of behind-the-scenes stuff that we never really see. And just like with Anne's position as our virtual learning coordinator, there is a ton of behind-the-scenes work to make virtual learning a successful option for so many of our students. Uh, Anne's highlighted some of what she does, but so much more. She's serving as a mentor, a coach, uh, the adult, like stable adult in many of these students' lives, provide the coaching and support. Uh, Anne sits on the counseling team as an additional member at the high school and really help provide stability there. Uh, so we owe a lot to Anne to really stabilize our virtual program to be a successful opportunity for young five to twelve.
As soon as, yeah, I mean, it started off with a handful of kids. And then we get the unique situations where kids travel, like all the tests and athletes that are working in unique setting. We had homeschool panels, Anne worked on our homeschool panels, uh, some combination. They really wanted some materials, it's a fun place to learn. Um, we work with kids that, she immediately works with kids, young five, all the way to seniors. Which is pretty fascinating. Then within the system, we have help kids, or people around it in multiple ways. So we have, Anne has helped coordinate the account system. Virtual learning, if you go truly virtually, you're going to need weekly and taught two ways, or a three-way communication. Which you have to initiate it, and respond, you gotta respond to that. But we moved to a different, a little different system, which has been a major decision. Working with Al Ed and Justice Program, the, uh, and Anne has been able to navigate it for five-year-olds to eighteen.
Do you have any questions?
What do you see in trend, especially, that's much as kids are wanting to learn, they can't offer, maybe can't offer, come home from school. What do you see in trends where most, I guess, kids are not home, needs an empty school, or a camp, has, they're struggling? Most environment, uh, at full-time have trend, like what do you, what are the numbers going?
Uh, for specifically mental health, students, we said, how does it compare essentially from COVID?
During COVID, kids stay.
It's increased, uh, uh, not significantly. We have, uh, probably eight students who are, um, getting treatment for their mental health challenges. That are involved in full, the full schedule of virtual learning.
Yeah.
Uh, I would say approximately twenty. It has. And we let the program grow organically. You know, we, like I said, I work with administration to, if they identify students, they come and say, hey, Anne, you know, this is a student who we think, you know, needs to, to transition to virtual learning. And then I work with them to make that happen.
We have families in the job every year. We send out at the beginning of the year. But we don't, what we don't want to do, with some schools now, years ago, they're constantly doing virtual programs. And all these parents sign their kids up, and the kids failed it. They were just looking for something else because what they were doing wasn't working. We want to be pretty thoughtful with it. My head is high-banning. Want to make sure kids are able to engage, so they get, know where to act. But we need it. So I'm the, the mentor with the teacher. That's the kind of, of test scores. Which right direction also.
It has, sorry.
Their test scores. Graduation rate.
For the virtual learners. Their, the, the completion rate is very high. We keep really, we keep a close watch on them. And if they, I check their progress weekly, if they're not on pace or close to being on pace, we'll contact their parents and, um, and the counselors. There are some high school students who, which I understand, because with the virtual classes, there is not really a penalty for if students get a little behind. But we have a conversation with the student, and they'll say, hey, Miss Trujon, I have a really big test coming up, or I just study for an A and E test. But I know and I know where, then I am behind, and if you think that, I'm sure I can.
We have had.
Yes.
We've had students, people like that, and I think we have a couple of students in the high school.
We do, we have some students who learn virtually in eight days and then come into the classes each month.
This is, uh. It's all that's what I'm saying. It's going forward. Like it, and said, they kind of all, they're, they're better for that. And we do get homeschool students, and they'll either want to do this with us, or they decide. They give us a lot of staying here. Reporting, reporting all this is pure homeschool, you're at home.
And because they're a Dexter high school, or a Dexter community school student, they have the opportunity to participate in Dexter, if they want to, and, you know, join clubs and go to seven thirty P M. So that's, yeah, that's a good highlight.
We also, thank you for your presentation. Thank you. Um, do we receive the same reputable statement?
Yes.
And I think, you know, years ago, when virtual learning worked, um, that took a lot of, it wasn't as much support in the same, that some of the programs that this one's got, lots of support. Sending them.
And there, there are some. We've been pretty. If you wanted to try to meet specific needs, then it's easier to figure out for the families that they call, or we tell them, I'm thinking of, or we give them examples, or a few examples for this. In advertising, a lot of the, you'll see the big, not only charters, there's a comparison. We've been, how do we meet the need, how do we opt? The high school though is fascinating, what we've seen in the number of kids that want to take, uh, like a test. It's, it's huge, it's a huge number, it's like twenty-something percent of high school. And some of them think they're going to be easier to believe in them. And then they go like, oh, cows.
And that's where Anne working in coordination with the counseling office to make sure that kids are getting the appropriate credits for graduation, right? We still have that requirement, we still need to make sure that all of our students are on pace for graduation. Uh, so she's in there regularly working with the counselors, just to make sure everyone's on track to be successful.
I don't support that program, but there are, um.
Oh, yeah, we have kids that are, all kinds of different, so we'll end up with kids with A and E, A and E plus, we have occasional I D. Um, we do get these unique, over the years, the athletes that are, that. But it gives a great option to get to stay there, so it, it, it really does. And I originally started off as, we got kids, like an hour release, then two more, then it was a little more, and then we went to high school, it's complicated, next that. She's, she's really done a great job, great investigation. Being able to support lots of them. It's, and then meanwhile, she's got, she's got, she's always in spirit.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that, thank you.
I don't go anywhere. We have our state test results, I, Ryan will share.
All right, I know you all had an opportunity to review the data, so I'm not going to go slide by slide and share it each, but a lot of commonalities to last year, some similar findings. And definitely want to share the way the district responded in a few of these cases. Uh, so just as a reminder, our M-Step Spring Assessment, I, we're talking about assessment, we typically are thinking about assessment in different ways. We have screening tools, we have diagnostic tools, progress monitoring tools. We also have a formative assessment, and Anne mentioned those earlier. Those are really the assessments that are driving our instruction, letting us know how we're doing in teaching and learning. And then we have these big summative assessments. M-Step is a summative assessment, it's given at the end of the academic year. And it really is to measure how students did, learning the standards in that specific grade. So there's some benefits and some challenges to that, and we'll take a look at that second year. Uh, like last year, you'll have an opportunity to review our data in four different ways. So you'll see a line that will represent the Dexter Community Schools. You'll see a line that would, uh, mark that peer group. These are forty-ish schools across the state of Michigan that have similar pre and reduced lunch population. Uh, so what we worked to do was define forty different school districts that have similar demographics to us here in Dexter. Uh, you'll also have an opportunity to review our data against WISD schools as well as the state of Michigan. First two slides, we give you a general overview of all of the assessments. So if you were to take every grade that we administer, our ELA assessment, uh, this is just an aggregate of all that data. Again, in this line, you'll see that reddish-like top here is something that peer group, orange being the Dexter Community Schools, green our Washington ISD, and then blue state of Michigan. Uh, one note that you'll have throughout the whole presentation is Dexter, uh, exceeds the ISD as well as the state of Michigan in nearly every single assessment. And just like last year, we kind of danced back and forth with that peer group, uh, with something really special happening in fifth and sixth grade, where we really just superseded and surpassed that line. Uh, math assessment, so again, you'll see that orange and red are a little bit more similar there. Positive trend in nearly all of the. I talked about some of the uses of M-Step and this assessment. So it does provide a snapshot of a student, it does provide a snapshot of a building, district, and the state. Uh, one challenge of that is it truly is a snapshot. You can think about your own children taking this assessment, there's a lot of assessments to take in a short period of time. And students not feeling their best, students not feeling. And students not feeling their best, students not feeling up to an assessment, students feels like they, it 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 really can be reflected in our data at an individual level as well as a building. So we try when we are doing data analysis internally, it's trying to make that, right? We're also looking at our N W A assessment. We're looking at local assessments to make sure that we're being the most comprehensive picture of students. So I share that to say, we definitely are looking at this data, but there is more information to the story as well. It also helps us make sure that our curricular resources and the programming and instructional strategies are aligned with state standards. So I know that you all are well aware of some E L A work we have done kindergarten through fourth grade. These assessments will be reflected on last year's curriculum resource. So it hopefully be that at the end of the year, this year, as well as the next couple of years, we would see an uptick in some of our curricular choices that we've made kindergarten through fourth grade. Uh, so again, remember that this data is representing last year. Third grade math. Fourth grade E L A. Whenever we see a big jump in an assessment that you see in twenty twenty one there and you'll see back up to twenty twenty two. Could be one of many things, could be a cohort, it could be an assessment. Uh, typically when we see all the lines moving together, it's an assessment. It could be a really challenging assessment year or what we use your assessment here. You'll see that trend happen in a few places as well. Uh, we see, do see a little dip. I would remind you, and I know you are very competent mathematicians, take a look at the scale, just remind yourself where we are. There are a few times that you see a negative slope. Just to look at the scale, sometimes it's a decrease of only a few percentage points. So it's good to look at that when you're looking. That was a big, yeah, yeah. And so one thing we've done in third and fourth grade here. And one thing we've done here, Daniel, in third and fourth grade, uh, and it's in response to some of the data you'll see in fifth and sixth grade. Fifth and sixth grade last year utilized an application called Math Accelerator. It took students N W B A scores and assessment we give three times per year. And it aligns their score, their strengths and other areas for growth with Khan Academy that creates an individualized playlist for every kid. Fifth and sixth grade uses program wide, the whole everyone freaks out utilizing last year. I think you'll see the results show that it was very effective in their math programming. Uh, we now are rolling it down to third and fourth grade as well. So we will have classes in third and fourth grade utilizing Math Accelerator. And our hope is that it would help provide some similar results to the results we see in fifth grade. Fifth grade E L A. Again, not too different than years past. You start to see an uptick in fifth and sixth grade for math and E L A assessment with overtake in. Seventh. Fifth grade math, nice jump there. Remember, we have science and social studies a few times throughout the student's career. Uh, so one of them is in fifth grade, fifth grade science assessment. This is one that you do see a pretty big dip. When you look at scale here, we are going from about fifty eight percent to fifty four percent. Uh, so. Not positive, which we would love to have seen, but not as big of a negative as the graph makes it. Uh, twenty twenty, they did not take the assessment because of COVID. Twenty twenty one went about in the next day.
Right. And now everybody's okay. Yeah.
Uh, fifth grade social studies. Sixth grade E L A. This is one that we mentioned earlier, where you see each of the lines with a little bit of a negative trend. It might point the assessment. Could have been a more challenging assessment. Can you see our peer group, Washington and Michigan all taking a slight dip, good point to the. But like anything, there are so many variables. I think we do our best to analyze as many as we can and make really smart decisions about having forward. Sixth grade math, again, you see an uptick for Dexter and again, we're starting to overtake that peer group. Uh, these are the results we're looking to replicate third and fourth grade with that. Seventh grade E L A. Seventh grade math. Eighth grade science. You see a huge jump between fifth and eighth grade for sciences. Uh, where I, one thing that we know to be true is that fifth, sixth, seventh, eighth grade, we start to get specialized science instruction. It's an actual class on the schedule. Uh, so a little bit more focus in the sciences, obviously, it's paying off and that's the boss. This is our eighth grade uh E L A P S A T. Again, another one that we see a slight dip, but very high percentage, nothing to be too alarmed. Our eighth grade math. E L A math, P S A T and S A T, you'll see a similar pattern. Students tend to score very, very high. At the I S D level, at the state level on their E L A assessment, not quite as high on their math. Uh, so definitely it's something that we as a state, we uh nice here are talking about and thinking about in terms of mathematics instruction. Uh, Chris and I were chatting earlier, Jess, we were talking about math in the district and definitely need to focus in the near future. Uh, and we have some great things going on, but it's probably kind of a refresher just to make sure we're all on the same page and helping. Eighth grade social studies. Eleventh grade science. Eleventh grade social studies. P S A T. Uh, this is an interesting graph, a little challenge to interpret. On the uh X axis, you have percent of economically disadvantaged students. Essentially, we're looking at our free and reduced. On our Y axis, you have the total proficiency. If you follow a vertical line, you can track a district. So all the way through the left on that blue dot is Dexter Green Schools. If you go straight down, that blue dot would represent our E L A score. If you go straight down, that'll represent our math score. So within our E L A score amongst the I S D, one of the highest, if not the highest score. For for E L A, for our math, we have the second highest score just trailing.
Why are they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, this line would show a projection in terms of where you would anticipate a district to be based on their free and reduced lunch population. Uh, yeah, Whitmore Lakes, E L A is just through the roof. Uh, math's gonna be this dot in the far left here. Yeah.
Oh, we meet Chelsea.
You know, I always like to write an opportunity. Uh, S A T demographic group comparisons. Uh, so on the top part, you'll see Dexter scores, math, uh, on the bottom. Huxman said, well, on the top. Portion of the assessment, you'll see the English test and then you'll have our math scores. Uh, some historical data for you. So twenty twenty three would be the top line, then working down and go all the way back to twenty nineteen. A score just being fairly stable in E L A, we seem to be in the ballpark. Math scores have dipped a little bit. Below hand, just for comparison, these are state averages. So we look at our evidence-based reading and writing. I, what we mentioned, across the state, they tend to be a little bit higher. State average is just over fifty two percent. Uh, of students passing the test. So in Dexter, we're well ahead of that. Uh, and then meeting benchmark for math is a little closer to thirty percent of students across the state of Michigan. And again, we're well ahead of that. So. Uh. Just putting things in some perspective. S A T scores from this last year compared to the I S D. Uh, so here you have individualized high school programs across the Washington County. Uh, you'll see Dexter Falls in the upper third. Uh, we have Pioneer Skyline broken out its independent high schools, both of all three or all four of the Interover schools. Uh, Chelsea, Celine just ahead of us and where's Dexter?
It really is us in our.
Do a, do a work, be Chelsea. Uh, it's a great. Yeah, this one's a lot. I'm sorry. That's driven. And it's converted us to the deepest purple. Uh, which you'll actually find toward the top. I know that there's a few shades of purple here. Sorry, this is the way it came from the state software. Uh, I'm sure Chris can point to it uh further, the fourth dot down. There you go. Uh, so Dexter Community Schools. So it's great for us to get this data, you know, in full transparency. A real challenge is we get it now, right? We get it right now and we're thinking about last year. We're thinking about programs, decisions, students that came through our doors last year. Uh, some of the data, the students are no longer with us here in the Dexter Community Schools. Uh, so like I shared, we do use this data to evaluate buildings, to evaluate programs, to really think about where we can provide support. Uh, try to highlight a few of the opportunities we've taken, whether new Math Accelerator or expanding our Lexio programming, which is in creating different shade green support for students. Uh, but all in all, nothing that was too alarming, more positives than negatives when you look at our data review. Uh, and it affirms the work we're trying to do. And again, I look forward to sharing E L A data in the near future. I know we've seen that historic uh third grade. Through fifth grade, just us trailing just a bit. And I'm really hopeful that this year and the years to come, see Dexter move up, it'd be just.
And we've had for a long time, six, seven and eight. And see if our E L A. And you'll. In your own. That's ready going in. Good questions. No, no, but talk this for the kids that are. Your dog, yeah, right? I don't know if she's well about S A T, but she's folks on her trade. She's not going to trade. They're not, they're not folks on a high level math. Well, they're folks in the high level trade. She's probably. Hard for them. I love math a lot, right? I mean, I mean, being in the military, people could do. Max out test work with good hands on stuff. Yeah, a lot of parachutes. They could tell you no pressure, they're red bone. Like with a lot of packages, shit, that. So the question is, the. But the question is, how do we, is, I don't think we can, but how would you hear like kids that are, they're wanting to go on the trades. Right, and they wanna go on the trade, they're gonna get, they're gonna excel on trades, they have successful careers. Versus.
They're not.
But they might not want it. They might not want it. They're not gonna take that.
I think when you think about the district mission, we think about our helm, the nine conference, he said, right, elevated, trying to build and establish within our students. You'll see kind of knowledge is one of them. And that we understand that as an academic institution, our job is to educate students, but we also honor that academic education is not the only part of us being in the school system. So as we think about collaboration, we think about communications, we think about critical thinking skills, these are skills that we now we are aiming to teach, but also to start to assess. And more than us assessing is having students assess. We need a student to be self-aware of their own strengths, their own after future. So it's something we've been rolling out. We actually just had our E L C meeting earlier today, so we had a next group of educators talking about. How to continue building and we're working on our learning. Uh, that'll be put in front of students like Marty, so he can be reflective about how he's growing as an individual, sets some goals for himself. And think about how the adults in his life, your next tools can help support him in each, each of.
Yeah, that too. So the testing industry is trying to figure it out because we're in this weird crossroads of testing. Here, colleges now are, they found that they can be test optional. And some really like the classes they started to get in of kids. Um, so we're seeing a de-emphasis to test in some ways. Which is cutting into a multi-billion dollar industry, that industry plans to figure out how to assess the other skills. Which are important. I don't know, let's go. We're trying to figure out a way to. I didn't wanna go to that first.
Thank you.
And. Thank you, Ryan.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to our first topic. Participation during public comment, each speaker has a lot of the maximum five minutes for twelve thirty minutes, unless otherwise notified. Speaker will be asked to announce his or their name and district president. And indicate if he, she, they represent a particular organization or agency. No person may speak more than once on the same subject during a single meeting. Those wishing to receive, first of all, is responsible in the board or superintendent plus complete. A public comment form will fill all the meeting entries and all on our website. In addition, as presiding officer, I would like to remind everyone that public comments should pertain to district, whether it be school matters or concerns related to the operation of school forums. Matters within the authority of the board. Those who wish to speak shall direct all comments to the board and not to staff or other participants. Also, speakers addressed from the board shall take into consideration rules of common courtesy. Speakers who make attacks of a personal nature and in the park, who do not abide by the rules of common courtesy, will be reminded of such rules by the board president or presiding officer. Such individuals may be asked to leave the meeting if their communication is disruptive or interfere with the orderly partners of the meeting. Also, please understand that board members do not respond to public comments, but we will listen very carefully and follow them as appropriate. If there is immediate need for clarification, we will see so happen. Speakers a lot of time. Would anyone like to uh speak? Uh, and participate in public. Ten seconds. I know while we're talking. I wanna make sure that the water are down before they're on. All right. Uh, we will move on to our administration, administrative board, starting with.
All right, we have later in the event, uh, to discuss and update the multilateral center. The classrooms are still. Still a challenge. We've shut down a couple of speakers. And then patching together does begin. This week, it's two hours. We're working on. The uh. We do play Chelsea or Chelsea this week on Friday, so it uh should be a packed house. They used to send happy birthday cards. You wrote history last year. It'd be nice to start sending that birthday card through Friday. Um, and then German exchange, our guests from Burghausen arrive from Thursday. And we'll have fifteen German students paired up with fifteen other students who've been here for most ten days. And then they'll go next summer and Mr. Paul will be taking that.
Um, all right, I have the support. And then I am. I will table where I, I accept that you have to. Also, the rivalry between the Dexter. The Education Foundation Dexter versus. Um, but there is also a rival.
There's one you told it.
That's right. There's a, it's a magic one. So I'll go into that. Send it over to our.
I think that's how it's been saying, um, did game on Friday, but everything's been doing very well this season. It's going pretty well at the. I feel sort of. Worked as well as doing. That was good. But, um, yeah, other updates, uh, the bus features, that's just a chance. It's Thursday. That'll be exciting. You know, the ball of all the big game is coming up, so the teachers are being sold that. Um, Miss Shit isn't here, but I know she wanted to pitch on them. It's, you know, like the lead guys that are already. Well. Oh, okay. And just Dexter's been going strong. There's been a couple, um, issues with trying to fill babysitting slots. Lots of problems here, you know, it's been, been presented to students and it's been also good, but.
That's the chance.
Uh, yes, the playoffs are. Yeah. Soccer, tech. That is all in states. Happy, it's something. Yeah, we win in everything.
All you do is win, win, win.
No, but this is. Pointest.
Super sad. Sorry, that's. Great. Um, we move on to our incentive items. Incentive items are usually typically. Today, we have our high management for the base certifications for higher special education. Today, we have our hiring in front of the base, recommendations for higher special education. Director and Vicon and D H S principal. Uh Valina, for teaching positions, the resume and recommendation from higher, for instance, for the C F O. Except for it and appropriate individuals option will be. Kind of. All right.
Well, that's uh. See the. Uh recommendation for higher, same thing as I said, I'm sending them up to the region. Other than it's formatting.
It moved in a second, like quickly. Uh is there any?
Listen.
Thank you very much. Well, question. I was ready for. There's a lot of discussions. Do you have a question? Maybe isn't all of us, oh, all right. All right. It's, I didn't hear any discussions, but I wanted to give everybody a chance to. What, there's any material to the comment, um, welcome, I'm glad we found somebody so qualified, so that's.
Well, well, Miss Sharon, I was dreading this day for a long. Though I really appreciate the quality of that, so. Touch me. You know, it's. So this was incredibly fast. Seeing.
Yeah, and I, I would say I do appreciate that because that held on background. Virtually before we got to meeting, so we had a chance to. This is an action, this is consent, um, so all those in favor of upgiving the consent items involved. Say aye.
Aye.
Uh maybe opposed, say nay. Right now, welcome.
Thank you very much.
For the next steps, are we gonna get to go Patrick or send my?
Oh, I just hit send, it's.
Yeah, she's gotta get you some. Have to get you some gratitude here.
Yes.
This year.
It's my husband's tip.
Part of the party, yes, thank you.
Hi.
Yep. About an hour, so it's a little over an hour drive, it's something that I've been used to, um, my last couple jobs, uh, and the jobs in audit were all travel days, so. So it's made just fine.
Do you have a drive-through Chelsea?
I don't know.
No, no.
I'm not sure yet, okay, well then.
Right on. Did you have any relatives, Anne Harper, uh? Generation?
I don't think Anne Harper, we're all from like Genesee County area, yeah.
There was a, was made for, kind of attorney firm, uh. Future, this one's partners.
Okay, I had an uncle who was an attorney, but not, like I said, in that area, so, yeah, yeah, not how.
Well, well.
Yeah, 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 not that I'm aware of, it's well down the line, yeah.
All right. Awesome. Discuss, let's table this around. All right, we're gonna move on to our action items. Um, we just. We didn't call something, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, sorry. Um, we have action items, which is number one to accept the comments. Um, our package contains detailed financial information. Twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three school year from Raymond, uh earlier in the meeting, was presented the findings, the board and board members will have had, you know, three gas questions. Is there emotion? Under the word of, word of education except for twenty-two, three, twenty-two, four. Remove the second for any discussion. There is no discussion, I'll move it to the, we'll hold up. The Albert. The Arnold, but. Hi, it's greater, it's accept. This is Angus, hi. The Monday. The Vera, hi. He's so, he's always asking, he's talking. I'm asking questions, he's talking. Well, there's. Uh we'll move on to our action. Alter the settlement, our package includes information regarding proposed settlement with alternative group as part of the class action lawsuit against companies that market paying for products and minors. The Board of Education passed similar settlement or submission in March of this year. Is there emotion?
I moved that the Board of Education off, but pretend. Forget so.
Move second.
The agreement, the process. What I said. Yeah, it's. Anyone, and hopefully change.
That's a big day, um, there's a Netflix documentary out, not that I've seen a fucking, so it's pretty interesting. The way it started. Interesting in life. Any other discussion? We'll move into a vote, all votes. For Arnold, but. Vividly, hi, it's greater, hi, it's Angus, hi, for Monday, for, for Vera, hi, for Albert, good. Great, we'll move on to our policies first reading, on September thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three, the policy committee met to review policies twenty-four fourteen, reproductive health and family planning, and twenty-four eighteen, second. They are recommending the two policies be combined into one clarity, committee made no changes to existing policy text. There is one legal up update from the E O L S, the language regarding provision and proportion referral. The committee also added the definition of sex education, finding these policies will need rescinding the current policy, board four, one, four. Move with the Board of Education approved it, ask policies one, four, one, four, one, two. I'll second, it's been moved seconded for the discussion.
So significantly, I'm talking about the confusion of having two separate priorities. Uh, we have families, making staff, move out of sex education, which are really unrealistic policy. So put them all in one, to have a clear definition of what is sex education. And to add in, changes in law where kids staff is making up a word, but it's very clear now, it can be a policy in one that. Staff cannot assist students. Anyone? But it's clear.
I followed it, printed one point, all the highlighted material there. The three. I will just note, there are bureaucrats that are repeated between policies, and we chose to implement so that it's not a policy change, so there's. Now, but it's. Very. Either I am. All right. Any other discussion? This is all. Certainly. Hi, it's greater, hi, Angus. Love me. Vera, hi. For Albert, good, for Arnold. We want to. Speaking of that, we did, uh, an executive summary from the Director of Instruction, Ryan Rutter. Regarding the reestablishment of the Sex Education Advisory Board, the S B A. Members, he did solicit people who volunteers would be part of the committee to prefer certain interests and availability. Members were selected to meet required goals as outlined by M D P provisions to the code. Three eight zero point five, sorry, one five zero seven. This evening, the board needs to appoint the committee members so the committee can begin. Sir, motion. I'll move with the Board of Education, appoint following people to the Sunset Advisory Board. Amy Barry, Dr. Laura Bay, Master Tomatoils. Paul Noddy, Dr. Randy. Professor. Um, Mufu Asalava, Dr. Professor. Inford, Jeremy, Thomas, Penny Jones. I leave, Warren, Crystal Zerr, Anne Scruggs, Jerry Rushkey, Amy Reiser. I'll second, it's been moved seconded, is there any discussion?
Ryan, maybe, could you just give a brief review of process for all these folks before?
Yeah, sure, uh, early in the summer, we sent out to the whole community, an interest form, for people that were interested. Uh, Dr. Tim was appointed in this very committee to review all the votes. Uh, we were able to assemble and review their application based off. Uh, rubric, and then we had to come, I think, maybe that meets the legal requirements. But as a reminder, there's a number of people that must fill a role of clergy, that professionals, certain percentage must be parents, but not too high of a percentage of parents that also work in the expertise schools. So it's a big puzzle to figure out that we have all the appropriate representation to the committee. Uh, so that group was able to put the names in front of you today. Uh, we were able to confirm with each of the applicants that they were still interested, that they wanted to receive the recommendation for appointment. Uh, and they are all able to meet on most wanted, so after these folks are appointed, we'll work with them to determine steps with it.
Who was on the committee and how they have, yeah, versus how many, so like. Five forty-something applicants, yeah. The challenge was who needed the medical. Uh, we had, we had three cardiac applicants, so we picked all three. Um. We had to go back out for students. Because we only had one speaker or two speaker, I think, really just because I got opportunities. Um, we had one board member, myself, Mr. Rutter, and two other internal presentable, three applicants, see. We, it was three diverse, it was really bad.
We also consulted with our sex education advisor from the W I S D, who was extremely helpful about the process, just to ensure that everything was done by the books, sound per state law. Uh, there's a lot of people compliance to make sure that we've done the process correct, and she would really help a partner in this process.
And we, we ended up with, it is very bad.
So.
Final decision.
Is this a one year?
No, every time the committee changes, we're going to.
But they would change uh presentation or whatever.
And at some time. The ones that are filling the parent call. We're gonna have. The part of the bounce, the parents, they're good, it's, they're good. Yeah, there will be some natural turnover that happened. And for what, it would be. Big part of all, so that's. All right.
Well, I would just like to thank all the applicants for taking the time, um, and showing interest in this. Committee, and then also to people that are in the process of appointing, um, or taking on the task. Accepting, accepting that, and then to the committee for, for like the all of the. Selection, I know it was a pretty daunting, as you said, there are a lot of rubrics that need to be. Met, and so I appreciate all the time. You put in, Ryan, he's been like the star of the skating today, he's been doing a lot of work, so I appreciate that.
It could be great, update resources at some point, log and watch. And they won't be just. Pulling on right now.
I'm getting those nine dollars, I guess. I didn't. All right, um, it's been moved inside the, is there any further discussion? Well, we're, we'll, we'll call folks. For her, hi. Angus, hi. For Monday, for Vera, hi. For Albert. For Arnold, uh. Hi. Okay, we will move on to our fifth active item, which is to certify M A S P delegates. M A S P's twenty-twenty-three delegate assembly will begin Thursday, November ninth, at seven P M, at the Center. Delegates, uh, selected by boards of education across the state will decide. M A S P's positions on a wide variety of issues affecting education. The Board of Education must choose delegates to represent for the Dexter, V O E, this evening, so they can certify by October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three deadline. Apparently, Elise Purley and Jennifer Kangas are scheduled to return. The Board of Education now will need to send Jennifer and delegates to the name, if something, the number nine. Move, I can do any discussion.
Yeah.
All right, so, well, hang on, that's just. I did. All right, um, we'll move on to the vote hall. Um, Angus, so. For loving, hi. Albert, for Arnold, uh, Rutter, hi. Greater, hi. Great. And our sixth and last. Um, action item, we have the M I S C C twenty solar farm electricity power purchasing agreement. This evening, this package includes a memorandum and supplemental information from CFO Sharon Rashby regarding the attached M I S C. Twice solar farm electricity power purchase agreement, finding for you this agreement. D C S will be able to stabilize and predictably budget the large sports before electricity cost. Director Rashby will share a brief presentation on the solar farm project and answer any questions of people. I'm with the Board of Education about the test, that's who's been providing a M I S. It's been moved and seconded, move into discussion.
Okay, you want to go to the next page?
Yeah.
Um, so, I drew this out on those little boards, driving, uh, walking around, um. I didn't want to, um, make a recommendation and enter into a fifteen-year agreement, walk out the door. So, um, I wanted to make sure, um, we completely understood what it was that we were doing. We have been working with M E S I for, since two thousand nine, we've been purchasing either our gas or electricity through them. And it's a cooperative of schools, so there's a nonprofit entity that actually purchases the, the little electrons that go through the sky, right? Um, when it's generated, and that's been purchased by Constellation. So I, when they initially gave me, uh, here, here's how much money you can save, I went, well, wait a minute, like, that's not what we're, we're paying right now. And so I needed to break it down, we went back and did an analysis five years back. Because we were only paying about six point eight cents per kilowatt hour back five years ago. So. Why is, why is it that they're comparing an eleven cent comparison when they're giving us an analysis? And wanting us to enter into this agreement? And the reason is, five years ago, the primary power was generated by fossil fuel coal plants. And those plants were fully depreciated, they were built a busyly years ago, and those have been coming offline. So as new power plants were being built, which is kind of the, the little middle there, um, those are primarily natural gas fed, um. Uh, power plants that are generating the. Um, uh, power plants that are generating electricity. So the cost is, has gone up because the fossil fuel plants are coming offline and the new plants are generating the power that we've been purchasing. So you kind of see as we've moved to where we're at, um, the comparison that we did of the ten point seven cents. But really what it's going to cost for us when we're not buying blended fossil fuel and natural gas generated fuel. We're looking at eleven point two cents per kilowatt hour. Um, and this is, um, like, if we went forward, you know, who knows? In the last couple of years with COVID, they weren't able to like buy electricity at really low rates because it just wasn't being used to the same extent during COVID. Um, and so a lot of that data, the nineteen, twenty, twenty, twenty one years really skewed. So even though it looks like we spent very little, what we really want to compare it to is that eleven point two cents. Okay? So, um, we've been working with MISC on our own solar, when we did the Bus Hub Solar. For years, like, we were comparing notes back and forth, we were comparing proposals back and forth. Um, and they had created this Rite program, you've probably heard of, um, where they were working to put solar into schools. And the solar was going to be on a cent per kilowatt, that's what we were committed to. Um, is, is buying purchasing agreements for them to build solar in schools. We didn't qualify because we wanted to do it the Dexter way, we wanted it our way. Uh, we wanted our cover, you know, bus hub and our ground mount. And so we went out on our own and we ended up creating our solar plant, which is on the right in the green box. So that's our bus hub. One point one million is what we, um, we issued the contract for, we're going to get about thirty percent back of that in our tax credits. And we're going to generate about six hundred and sixty five thousand kilowatt hours per year. Um, over fifteen years, that's about eight cents per kilowatt hour. Um, then there's this thing called credits, which are like, you can sell them, like, because we're going to be doing solar. There's going to be these credits that you either can expire or you can actually sell like on a secondary market. Chris is going to do that for you. Um, and so our real cost per kilowatt hour is going to be about seven point three to seven point cents per kilowatt hour. With what we're going to generate at the bus hub to, to generate the power for acre beacon, Wiley, Wiley Pool and Milk Creek, right? So I'm like, oh, good job, guys. Um, so that is putting our own solar installation. MISC has continued down the path with their solar, developing what they want to do for solar. And what they ended up doing was working with CMS Energy, which we had actually got a proposal from them for the bus hub at one point. Um, they worked with CMS to come up with, they are actually building a solar farm. And there's a whole proposal, I don't think it made it into the board packet, not proposal, but a whole presentation they did, it's on their website. But um, that they are actually building a solar farm just for MISC customers. So instead of buying power from Constellation, that's from the natural gas uh fuel plants. They are going to be actually generating solar, there's a giant solar farm going into, in Genesee County, and it's not taking up land, whatever, all the trees or whatever. But, but they have committed to charging um seven point five cents. So if you see that energy plus capacity, that's seven point five cents. They will not charge us more than seven point five cents for the next fifteen years. That's under the, um, the North Star Clean Energy MISC. The energy, that's the raw energy that's being produced by the solar. And then there's a one cent per kilowatt hour capacity, you see where I'm at? Right there. That is what the resolution is, um, is having us sign a court. And then in addition, obviously, that's just like the energy out there. Then it has to get transmitted, which has been pretty much a stable point seven five cents. Um, if you remember, like, your electric bills, you got all these different lines, and you got all these commissions and transportation and all that. Um, so delivered to D E, D T E, it's going to be about eight point two five cents. Um, and then we, we, we pay MISC a fee because they get all our, they do all this work for us. Um, and then the delivery is something that on our, out of why, like, once it gets to the D T E. Then D T E has to send it on the D T E lines to get to our different buildings. Um, on our primary power, um, so like at the hub, our high school in Creepside, those are all primary power. Where we, we built a, put a transformer in when we built those facilities. So that we're actually transforming that power into the usable power in our schools. We're here at Bates and at Transportation, our athletic fields. Um, that's, it's secondary power, so we pay a couple cents more per kilowatt hour because we don't have the transformer. And that's actually why we, we built that loop up there. Because each building individually, it was so costly to put in a transformer, you wouldn't do it for a low power draw. But by creating that loop that we did up there back when we built, um, Milk Creek and Cornerstone. We made it that power loop so that we could save two cents per kilowatt hour all these years on all the power that we drew. So with this, with this agreement, we will be spending about ten point six cents per kilowatt hour um for the next fifteen years. Um, so, and I know the question has already come up that, well, what happens if we say we want, you know, a hundred percent of our energy purchased through this solar farm? Yet we put in our own solar installations like we do here, it's just going to be our draw. Like, we may look at the, you know, center, the community center we're going to, um, construct, and if it's close enough here, we might say. It makes sense for us to do a primary power here and see what the draw is, because when you've got pools, you got a lot of, um, a lot of draw. Um, and see if it makes sense for us to do something like that here, so. At the bottom, you see the annual purchase, like, we use seven point three million kilowatt hours right now. Um, about six point six percent of, six point six million will come from the solar and then what we're generating on the balance at, at DCS. Um, and so I, that's kind of a simple chart, I hope. Um, it was a, it was a lot to break down into like a format to understand, to see if this was really a good deal. Then we got the choice of, well, some schools are, you can pick a minimum of thirty percent of our power coming from the solar farm up to a hundred percent. And a lot of other schools are like, what are you doing, what are you doing? And they're like, oh, we just picked fifty or we just picked seventy five. Without real data to support anything, and, and it's like, why would we do anything but that? Um, and then it will help us be able to budget, because oftentimes, when we see our budget variance at the end of the year, it's because. We didn't predict electricity, right? Electricity kilowatt hours went way up. This is the bulk of our energy that we're going to be purchasing at a pretty stable rate for fifteen years. So.
Guaranteed. Ten point six. That's the complete price.
So the guaranteed price to buy the raw energy is seven and a half cents. That's what the resolution is, is that we are committing to purchase our energy from the power um solar farm for seven and a half cents. The transmission rate is going to be consistent no matter where we get it from, and that will fluctuate based on costs. Uh, but even if we went back to eighteen, nineteen, our transmission rate was point seven five cents. So it doesn't vary a lot. And then on the, on the bottom half, the D T E delivery, that really is, D T E is regulated, so they do need to go to the state. They could go to the state, and we're on this D six two educational, um, institution primary rate for the majority of our power that we purchase. Um, they can go to the commission and go, hey, our costs are higher, we needed it to be two point five or two point six. But it's going to be that no matter where we get our power from. So this kind of breaks our power into the different components. So no, it's not guaranteed at ten point six, one two six, it's guaranteed at seven point five. And then we'll have the other for fifteen years, and then we have the other. Um, the other stuff, and it does, like, we, now we start drawing, you know, eight and a half million because we add facilities or, or whatever. We still can get a hundred percent of our power at that seven point five cents.
How much US paper it says, based on our solar panels.
See that one more time?
Estimate, we will save. And how much of that is related to our solar panels?
Um, well, the, the MISC um estimate is, um, in the, it was in your packet, you want to scroll down a little bit. One more. So that is, um, MISC's spreadsheet I injected up below. Um. The estimate for savings by us using the six point six million kilowatt hours of the solar farm versus our six hundred and sixty five thousand that we're going to generate internally. Saves us almost a million dollars over fifteen years. And then if you scroll back up a couple. Yeah, here, if you want to know, go up one more. If you want to know what we're going to save, we're going to be between seven point three and seven points of, seven cents, depending on how much we can sell our energy credits for. Um, but even if you set eight cents compared to ten point six cents times the six hundred and sixty five thousand kilowatt hours per year, that will be our savings. Per year by us having put in solar systems. So the real savings. So they're assuming. At the beginning, it's like four, five thousand.
That's all.
It, with construction was supposed to start this fall, so I don't know if they've broken ground yet, but, um. They were kind of pushing for us to do our resolution and then maybe they're analyzing, that's it.
Yeah.
For them. If they've ordered the stop, we're, we're actually waiting on the permits from the state, right? Then it will go online, then we'll start getting our power from it, it will be two thousand.
Where is, is it the bus?
Where is this?
No, I know that one, but the, the other, the one that you read.
Yeah, um, I think if you go up to my diagram, I, I pulled that out, like, oh, well, that thing up. So it's the sidewalk at the bus hub. And then there's the, that whole field, field. That's going to have the ground mount.
I have two questions. The one is, so if we do this, all our current buildings, we do a hundred percent solar power?
Right? All of our, um, all of the buildings we're purchasing are electric from MISC. Will be, the energy itself will be generated by solar. Yes.
Okay. Is there any downside to that?
No, because if, like, I asked that question, I'm like, what happens if they're not, like, it's not sunny? And, um, because it's CMS energy, they have. Other facilities generating, so really isn't going to be a hundred percent, well, they potentially need to use one of their natural gas. By your facilities to supplement it if they don't have enough. Um, but this solar field is specifically to generate the power for MISC customers, so it's not like it's going to get sucked off by business, other businesses.
Okay, and there is sort of a backup if something wants to.
Yeah, C, CMS is, is committed and guaranteed, and they're, they're a power company, they're not some slide by night. Solar power home that goes bankrupt, right? I mean, they are CMS energy, so that's what their business is, is to generate electricity for customers. So what's happening? Consumer, yeah, consumers.
Energy. So we're back. Yeah.
So.
Um, I, I don't know. They were building the, the facility, sizing it for the customers that have signed on as. How much power we need, and they know how much power we're using, but yes, they could in fact have, after all, then they would use it.
Assuming there is very, back on day to day basis, but. On your, so, and so sometimes it must be generated for yourself. Or the fact is less. Somehow, somebody's going to average out some other solar.
Well, they, I mean, CMS does, they generate electricity right now, right? I mean, and that's a blend of fossil fuel and natural gas and other solar installations that they have just to generate their own energy. So yes, I mean, it does be part of their whole network, but it's sized to be for MISC. I'm sorry. Okay. Thank you for translating. In Genesee County.
If you can see. Thank you.
She's going to keep an eye on it for us.
Any other questions? And we will send it to, we will call them. Vera, hi. For Albert.
Hi.
For Arnold. Rutter. Hi. Ritter. Hi. Yep. Continue with analysis.
Thank you.
People move on to our discussion items, uh, which starts with an update on the multi-generations that are being funded. Dr. Tim is will update the forum progress, regarding funding for the multi-generational center.
Here's the written version of the progress, but I'll give you a little review. The eight and a half million is in the state budget this February first, which is going to wait to find out how the access funds and. Wouldn't that be more than, it is, uh, provided from senior funding that was provided for a senior center, a community center. Um, the senior center has been seeking additional funding, they just received a signature, that'll help with furniture needs, et cetera. Um, we have submitted a two and a half million dollar request from the state community center grant. Those, these four years was. So we'll know, we should know next week unless they decide it's good. And then the five million dollar request that Eddie King is working on is tied up in. And you can see, so we were supposed to know by October first, and I would say a little by mid-November, but I'm not sure. So sometime this year, we'll know. Um, Sharon and I met with, we've been working on understanding the property next to Bates here. And while considering this, we're saying on how that property is set up, what if we think. Create a senior community center by purchase of that property, we had a committee as much, that's three times. All the minutes are in the board packet. Um, really, it's a discussion of what are, what each entities, what does the senior center need? What is the school district need, which includes us not paying out of our different operations of the community center? And then what if we're trying to provide for the community and help with construction? So it's still fairly early, once we know how soon we're getting the money, we can actually go faster, we'll just go kind of this. The ball is sporting and trying to wait and see until we know how to get the funds and how much we have. What it looks like is we'll be between eight and a half and like fifteen, maybe next fourteen, so. Yeah, but, oh, yeah, it'd be nine, nine and a quarter, but some of that will break, break with the season. So we're between nine million and then like just over fourteen, in the fall, somewhere in that range. Just waiting. But we're moving it along, we're doing all the responsible research with us studying. And then we'll be doing sooner. Now that we've got the CFO to take over, so Sharon can free up to go figure this out, because the, uh, it's going to need her brains. Now we've gone to CFO to take over, so Sharon can free up to go figure this out, because the uh, it's gonna need her brains.
The legislators and seniors, that's not right. I mean, very much huge because of the security that they will have at home when we're done. So there there are uh, some problems on what's gonna happen. But unfortunately, even people who directly vote, like, so it's all this stuff, it's not healthy. Costs us those problems in community with proper understanding what's happening. We are recipients of a tremendous gift, yet we were not the voice of the like. It'll all be fine in the end, it's just, the hard part is there's no information to share. Some people are filling in the void, but there's not much more to share. We're supposed to get eight and a half million dollars in state budget. We don't know when and how yet, you know, sometime this fiscal year. And there's extra grant requested that we'll know about soon. And once we know, we'll do it, we're doing home form. Right now, we're kind of doing some preliminary work, doing what we can responsibly before we know exactly how much we have. It's closing responsible, pretty oversight of what's going on. Responsible for the operation, whether it's a school facility. Facility, uh.
It will be a school facility, well, I'm saying.
It's not, it's not, it's not a K, I'm sorry, it's not a pre-K twelve directly. Uh, it'll also, it'll provide some additional opportunities for our pre-K program. But it's tend to be the secondary there, it's ordered.
It's also, it's also senior. Or absolutely not, it has to serve. Can they see their name? I'm gonna go to. I'm kind of concerned about, I don't think money can get, how much if people are not negotiable? No, I hope this is an economist, like. You know. Right, I get it, but people are trying to. These are disturbing issues, this is not.
Uh, seven hundred fifty thousand, I think that, I think it's a solid decision, rest of the.
Right, when I look at, understand that part, when I look at. Minutes, right, it's a lot of in here. There are some, I think, the money comes from senior funding. So being a half in the other stuff. Also senior funding and has to provide for senior center need and such. And then as a school district, we have things that have to meet school purpose, right? And we cannot have it in general fund, negatively impact our looking at kids. So that's where the freezing is more, it's the, it's some of the things down on paper, it's freezing non-negotiable. Because really, it's a school district. It is, we cannot pull out a zero fund, senior community center, that's pretty non-negotiable. Um, it has to have a school purpose in order for us to hold it and be responsible for it. We're a K twelve school district, has to have a school, non-negotiable, that's why we use the phrase. My seniors don't need operations, they need operational funding. Where is your budget? To have a budget, so short, that's why I have to pay that with. And they're already going to, they don't wanna own it, yeah. They don't wanna pay their grant paid dollar. That's what we did with, with the history events and the, you're saying the coal was longer, I don't. I'm just saying that, we do all this stuff, I'm just concerned, you guys go to the committee. But people.
Hey, Mr. Clarence, I, um, because we did talk about that at the last meeting, um, the one dollar uh, rent. Um, if they would still be paying their first portion of utilities and. And that sort of thing, uh, which is what they did when they were in cooperation with us. There was already a formula that was uh, that was used and was probably, most likely something will be used again. So they will be, uh, as Jim Carson said, they're not, they're not asking for money, they will pay their. Their share in the operations and utilities, et cetera, that will be part of their operations, operational budget. Uh, the one dollar is, is quite frankly, without all the work that they did to get the eight point five dollars. We're just having this conversation. So that is, you know, that one dollar rent is sort of, that they won't, we won't be just paying all of the bills, but they will also. I think.
They will buy their own funding after all the program.
Right.
Operating that. Part of this facility.
Senior centers for their earnings. Um, we run it for a dollar a year, plus state budget, the subsidy cost, and. Plus the, there was a formula, and it really worked out when Sharon broke it down every year, what they're actually about, it was very close. And that's what they made, they could be. When we sold multiple, basically had the discussion. Board had to have the discussion. We knew we had one here to figure out. Worked out that there's a huge allocation of funds. We have to help get that in space. But we've been tied with senior. Turned that five grid down for. D C S. But very eager to contribute of, of money. I just heard people saying, it's a this, it's a this, it's a that, and it's not what.
Right, and that's part of, it's not the messaging, it's, it's messed up, and that's what we're trying to. Uh, that's part of the committee's aim is to, you know, make sure that the messaging is that this is a collaboration. It's a work on. Um, any other discussion?
This will be the last today. If this week will do something else, we get here.
Or we might not.
He did. He wants the federal.
We'll move on to our M E S T delegate resolutions. Also part of our discussion item, the M E S P delegate assembly on November ninth, district delegates will vote on amended, new, deleted resolutions. This package contains a list of all the resolutions that we discussed. Uh, there's also a link that has been provided for us from the full resolutions handbook. Trustee should review this material prior to the November sixth, twenty twenty-three board meeting in order to discuss any concerns and offer voting. Uh, for the certified, certified D C S delegate and ultimate at the November sixth. I highly recommend those, agree? Very fun when you get in there, uh, any sort of guidance is always helpful. You also pop out other dollars, so.
It is interesting to see how, how, it's really good.
I don't know if we have any more discussion, but I, I mean. Yeah, just absolutely, just, yeah, we'll take, take a look at the resolutions. Um, all right, we'll move on to our second opportunity for public participation. Same rule as before, is there anybody who would like to participate? No one's running, all right, we'll move on to board comments.
I just wanna give a quick update, there was a legislative practice for the Washington Association of School Boards, the second. Um, we have legislators there, the school districts, grade, whatever issues are on their mind, legislators ask questions. Um, anything that's on their mind. Um, they looked at things like retiree bill, mandatory subjects bargaining. Um, looking at the grow your own program that our county is working on, talking about budget funding. Um, like grants versus just, uh, you know, for people, monies. Um, generally speaking, if people have any issues that our districts would like to put on the agenda for the college players. Um, just always let me know, there are always people who are, just that I don't, of course, everyone's welcome to talk. I don't think they sent the, um, reminder of, you know, this time, so I'll try and make sure, I guess that's a for you, for you.
Um, as I mentioned before, uh, in addition to the the football game, there's also the E F D. Uh, the Child's Education Foundation. Um, it currently, so it was match at Monday, and uh, E F D was able to raise three thousand two hundred and seventy-seven dollars in donations. At to uh, the three thousand donor match at it for a total of six thousand just today. So currently, we are, we are winning, uh, ten thousand three hundred ninety-one to six thousand two hundred forty-nine, however. We still, we still have a lot of time, as as we say.
Yeah, there's someone sitting there at the game that says like twenty-five or forty thousand.
Right, that happens each year.
Every year.
So.
They need to jump the heels or two feet next year.
That's right. So anyway, don't, uh, don't, we cannot rest on our world's. Need to be that, because in the, in the end, everybody who wins is a student. Because E F D's um, fall grants, grants start on holiday. And, and, yeah, so ends on that, so then in November will be granting grants, so that's the best side. All I know. Great, we have information items in our packet, if you don't have any close session. Nine oh three, um, anything else, nothing, good, uh, I will adjourn.